Thank you for listening to Lone Star Community Radio. This program was broadcasted and recorded live from the LSCR Studios in downtown Conroe, Texas. Lone Star Community Radio is supported by listeners like you. Donate and sponsor today. For more information on getting involved with Lone Star Community Radio, contact us at lscrstudios@gmail.com or visit us online at www.irlovestar.com.
A continuación, Voces en Acción, el programa comunitario que informa a la comunidad latina. Voces en Acción, la verdad en acción. Voices in Action, the truth in action. Now, con ustedes Jenny Ibarra.
Good afternoon, good morning, good day, wherever you are. I hope you're doing okay. This is Jenny Rosales again with Voces en Acción, bringing you the latest information about everything that is going in Conroe, Montgomery and all over the world. Today, we have a special guest. His name is Kurt Maddox. He's the Mayor Pro Tem and he's a councilman, position number two of the city of Conroe. And he came to give us an update about all the development that is going to be done downtown on our city of Conroe area. Things that have been voted, plans that have been developed since 2019, and all the activities and all the new improvements that the city of Conroe will be incrementing from now all the way to 2024. Basically, they're planning all the way to 2024 to stop, you know, the type of growth, the growth basically, because our city, as you are aware, is the second largest city in the United States in growing steps. So that's what we're dealing with. So basically, all the things and enhancements and beautiful parks and convention centers and things like that that are going to be built, that's why we brought him. And I will have the honor later on to bring with you guys, of course, Major Jody, to talk to us as well in a later show. But today, we had that person, you know, Mr., we have the honor of having Mr. Maddox with us. And I will kindly appreciate if you stay for the show and listen to it. But before I can continue, I would like to also remind you that Voces en Acción is here to serve the community. And we would like to please have the honor, having you like their show in all their websites and at the same time, all the platforms, I'm sorry, and at the same time, to donate or sponsor us. We're here to serve the community. We are, you know, I am working, we are working along with Lone Star Community Radio, which is a nonprofit organization that is working constantly with all of us here in Montgomery, in the city of Conroe especially. And we would like to have the honor of having your sponsorship. If you can go to our webpage, it's www.irlovestar, irlovestar, I'm going to put it the way it's easier, Again, www.irlovestar.com and then backslash B E A S and Victor. You can go and see our website. You can see all the shows that we have up there. And we are able to weekly keep you informed and at the same time educated with everything that is going on with our Hispanic community as well and with the community in general. Like you know, our show is fully bilingua, so you're welcome to listen to it. And to give, we would like to get your feedback as well. Buenas tardes, buenos dias, donde quiera que esté usted. Gracias por escuchar hoy día. Hoy tenemos el honor de tener con nosotros al Pro Tem Mayor, que es también consejero de la ciudad, el señor Kurt Maddox. Y él va a estar con nosotros hablando de los diferentes tipos de desarrollos que van a ocurrir o que están siendo planeados desde el 2019 hasta el 2024 para proveer el progreso que hay en la ciudad de Conroe. Como ustedes ya saben, Conroe es la segunda ciudad de la nación que está creciendo en pasos agigantados por el tipo de camaradería y de unión que hay in Montgomery. Estamos creciendo, entonces eso se nos da para poder crecer. Están construyendo un hotel, están construyendo el Centro Convención. Va a haber un montón de cambios en la ciudad, infraestructura completamente de las maneras de vivienda, etc., etc. Y hoy tendremos la oportunidad de escuchar a señor Kurt Maddox hablarnos sobre eso. Al mismo tiempo, más adelante, tendré la oportunidad de traer al alcalde de la ciudad para que hable con nosotros el señor Jody. Estaremos esperando la presencia de él pronto aquí en nuestro estudio. Pero hoy quiero también pedirle a ustedes que, por favor, tomen la oportunidad de escuchar nuestro show, aprobarlo, decir like en nuestras páginas, en todas las plataformas, y al mismo tiempo darnos su soporte económico, sea mediante donación o patrocinio. Nuestra página irlovestar.com/ V D Victor EA. Nuevamente, irlovestar.com/ V D Victor EA. Y automáticamente usted puede entrar allí, ver nuestros shows. Estamos en Facebook, estamos en YouTube. Pueden clickear Voces en Acción y automáticamente saldríamos. Podrían escuchar todos los shows, que ya más de 40 shows que están grabados, y comentar, decir qué es lo que les gustó, qué es lo que no les gustó. Si ustedes también desean traer a alguien al show y hablar con nosotros. Mi número de teléfono es 832-732-4744. Repito, 832-732-4744. Again, I'm going to say this in English and I forgot about it and I apologize. If you would like to bring any of your, any guests or somebody that is interested in talking to us about their service with the community, everything that they're planning, we're welcoming people to come and be a guest of our show. Our phone number is 832-732-4744. Again, 832-732-4744. And we're here to serve you. I'm going to go ahead and ask our producer to please go ahead and show us the city of Conroe webpage, because for me it's very interesting how it's being planned. This plan has been done since 2019. If you go into the city of Conroe and you go into, I guess, what it says, Transparency, and in the first tab, it says Downtown Conroe Development by their plan. You click on there and there are about, it was 100 and something pages? No, 20 something pages, hold on one second, it's going to say right there. Oh, there's about 111 pages, I think it is, exactly. And that was approved in July 2019. But what I love it is the way they have planned the structuring of all the community, on all the area of the city of Conroe, which it looks like that right now. And all the expansion that is going to be done in the next four, five years. I guess 2024, 25 is when they're going to probably finish planning to do this. Si va a la ciudad de Conroe en el website conroe.org, automáticamente va a dar con el website de la ciudad, va a poder ver todos los planes que tenemos, que están planeados hasta el 2025 de la infraestructura, de todos los cambios que van a haber en esta ciudad y que nos están pidiendo a los ciudadanos del área, a que nos envolvamos y que nos voluntariemos y que participemos activamente en todos los cambios que hay. Por eso es tan crucial que podamos votar también en las elecciones por todos los representantes y de nuestra ciudad. That's why it's so crucial for us to have a voice, for you guys to vote in all the elections of the city, mayors, council, everybody that is affecting Montgomery and that is working with Montgomery. Because that's when you get able to say, yes, I want this to be that. Because guess what? It's coming out of our taxes. You guys pay taxes, it goes to the city, the city's moving, it's putting those taxes out there and it's making huge changes, the industrial park, everything. Can you go down to the bottom where it says, él nos va a poner abajo donde estamos hablando, en antito, los diferentes tipos de distritos y cómo están sus divididos. Y van a ver cambios tan drásticos y se van a ver tan bonitos. Los que vivimos en el área de Conroe, hemos ido a Woodlands. Y Woodlands, miren cómo está. Esto va a ser básicamente lo que van a tratar de hacer, dividir los cinco sectores. El área verde son donde van a haber artes y honores. En el área roja, todo lo que es la parte política, todo lo que es cortes, todo lo que es este pago de impuestos, todos los edificios administrativos, okay? Este, la otra parte, un poquito más oscura en verde, es el mercado. Entonces, el azul es el área de near town, que sería hacia abajo donde está el parque industrial. Y el otro lado hacia arriba es el homestead, todo lo que es el área que van a poner en la parte alta donde van a haber restaurantes, toda clase de venues y cosas para que nosotros nos podamos divertir. If you see right there specifically, and you can read this, please go in and read it. It's dividing it in five sections, basically. The central business where you have all the courts, all the, you know, where you pay your taxes, where you do all the, whatever is the administration of the city, the city council, everything is going to be in that area. Then, if you see, there's a light green button, which is going to be the arts and owners. That's where you have all the parks and everything that they're going to have arts and things like that. Then they have as well, in the top, the blue one is the near town. They have the industrial park in the backyard area. And that's going to be huge, because they already have Home Depot. There's other people that are going to be building back their industrial parks. And it's going to be amazing, because there's going to be more work for us, for the citizens of Montgomery and Conroe. And then, of course, the yellow one, the homestead, that area is going to be renovated and there's going to be a lot of restaurants and wineries and, you know, every type of nightlife and daytime activities. It's still, we have the Crichton Theater and we have, you know, activities like that back there as well. Mr. Maddox came and explained us directly everything that it was going to be done and how huge is the work that they're doing. We had the honor that this week, on the 22nd, the council members were completed. That means Mr. Hardman was already sworn in on the 22nd. You're able to go in there to and see the swearing in. And it was taped and it's posted there. And the same thing, our judge for the city, Judge Wagner. They were swearing on Monday, the 22nd, and it was a lovely, lovely event. And they were able to share with the community. And we are excited that now our council, our city council is completed. We have all of them, Mr. Coons retired. We really appreciate Mr. Coons' work and we really appreciate his labor during all this, I guess, 12 or 15 years that he was with us. We really appreciate his work. Estamos hablando ahorita de todo lo que pasó en esta semana. El día 22, se hicieron, juramentaron al consejero, señor Hardman, y juramentaron al juez, al juez de la ciudad de Conroe, el señor Wagner. Y ya están comenzando a trabajar con la ciudad. Ya está completo, nuestro consejal completo están ahí. El señor Coon se retiró y dio paso a que señor Hardman se sentara en su puesto. Y fue una transición muy bonita. Está grabado y está grabado en el website de city of Conroe, para que lo vean. Tenemos que estar en comunicación constante, porque esto nos ayuda a crecer como comunidad. La razón por qué digo esto es que si no hacemos ciudadanos americanos, los hispanos, y no vamos a votar. Eso es importante, siempre repetido y lo repito, este año es de elecciones. Necesitamos concientizar que hay elecciones y tomar proacción, porque usted está pagando impuestos, porque usted es una ciudadana o un ciudadano activo en la comunidad. Usted tiene que envolverse en las cosas de la ciudad, para que después usted no se pueda quejar y sepa por qué se hicieron. Aprender un poco de lo que está pasando en Conroe. You guys have to be completely proactive and know what's going on with the city of Conroe and how the city of Conroe is working. Please, I invite you to listen to Kurt Maddox. Mr. Kurt Maddox has vast experience of what he's saying. And at the same time, he's trying to be very open with the community and letting us know how much him, his family, and all of the councilmen and all of the judges and the mayor and their families and all the city workers are putting towards the growth of the city. Tenemos que aprovechar que nos ayudan, que están trabajando para nosotros. En estos momentos, todos estos señores están trayendo de sus familias, dejando sus familias para dedicarlas para la creación de un mejor Conroe, de un mejor Montgomery. Y si estamos aquí, somos ciudadanos americanos, tenemos que apoyarlos. Tenemos que conocer qué es lo que está pasando. Los invito a que escuchen a señor Kurt Maddox. I will invite you to now listen to Mr. Kurt Maddox and enjoy the show. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Voces en Acción, el programa comunitario que informa a nuestra comunidad latina. Usted puede apoyarnos con su patrocinio, informando, promoviendo y ayudando a nuestra comunidad. Tiene algún comentario? Quiere hablar con nosotros? Podemos escucharle y ayudarle. Llámenos ahora al 832-732-4744. Voces en Acción, la verdad en acción.
Hey, tune into the Bridge Podcast TX Tuesdays at 11:00 AM, where we are connecting commerce with community, interviewing business owners and leaders in the community, allowing the audience to peek behind the curtain of what inspires, motivates, drives these individuals to have meaningful, positive impact in this community. For more information about the show, log into irlovestar.com/tbptx.
Good morning, good afternoon, wherever you are. Thank you for joining us today again with Voces en Acción. Voices in Action here to serve the community of Montgomery County and all over the world. My name is Jenny Rosales, again your host. And I have the honor today of being, having with us one of the key members of our community. He has been working with us for a long time, especially in the city of Conroe. He is a gentleman that is known by his projects, by his work, by the way that he cares for the community. Eventually, he's a second, he's a Mayor Pro Tem, is under the major. But he's a city council member and he's in position number two. His name is Mr. Kurt Maddox. And Mr. Maddox, an honor having you, please. Thank you for joining me today. I always dream about you and having, and Jody as well, having you guys over here, because our community needs to know about that.
Well, thank you very much for having me out here today. And I look forward to the interview and to the process. And yes, I'm excited to be working with the city of Conroe and having my hands in it and doing the best I can.
Estamos hoy día, buenas tardes, buenos días, donde quiera que esté. Voces en Acción nuevamente trayéndole la última información sobre este, todos los cambios, las cosas que están pasando en la ciudad de Conroe, in Montgomery, in todo el mundo. Y hoy tengo el honor de tener con nosotros al Mayor Pro Tem, y él es el consejal número dos de la ciudad de Conroe, señor Kurt Maddox. Y le doy la bienvenida a él y me dice que es un placer para él trabajar con la ciudad, para trabajar con nosotros, por estar con nosotros. Y vamos a tratar de conocerlo un poco, de quién es Kurt Maddox, cómo trabaja él y los años que tiene con nosotros. Sir, I start with all my guests, trying to familiarize them with the community. So, you know, the Hispanic community is very familiar and you know. So the main thing I ask today to start is, who's Kurt Maddox? How many years do you have with us? And what brings you to enjoying the work that you do? Because you enjoy the work that you do.
So, my name is Kurt Maddox. I've lived here for all my life. And I'm married to a local girl, Tanya Brown Maddox, and we have two kids. I was a golfer, went and played college golf and came back. And I now work at Conroe Golf Cars, Vice President of Conroe Golf Cars, been there 30 years.
Okay, el señor se llama Kurt Maddox, como usted decís, está casado con la señora Tammy Brown Maddox. Tienen dos hijos y que él le gustaba, él nació aquí. Él había vivido toda su vida en Conroe. La esposa también. Básicamente, son personas que se han dado a la comunidad. Y al mismo tiempo, él le gusta jugar golf, ese es parte de su hobby. Y jugó profesionalmente golf, salió de eso y ahora está, es dueño de una corporación de golf. Y eso es lo que él está, tiene 30 años trabajando con eso en Conroe. Y además de ser también este, el consejero número dos de nuestra ciudad. Sir, I know that you have had emphasis on our project. Everything that has been done for the last years, you've been here overseeing it, sitting down with the city council, working. How have you seen the progress in Conroe?
Well, excuse me. The growth in Conroe is growing awful fast. We're number one. We were number one in the fastest growing city in the United States. And I think we're now two, if I'm not mistaken. But we're pushing forward. We've got a lot of big projects coming up with Oscar Johnson and the new Hyatt Hotel Convention Center. They've helped growth. We've had some developers come in and provide affordable housing for everybody and new homes. And with the growth, we see a lot of great economic benefits to the city.
Okay, dice que él básicamente ha visto cómo ha crecido Conroe. Era la ciudad número uno en el Estados Unidos que crecía abundantemente. Ahora estamos en número dos. Básicamente, él dice que él ha visto las inversiones que se han hecho. Está trabajando constantemente en estos momentos en la renovación del centro comunitario Oscar Johnson. Está trabajando también, va a haber un Hyatt Convention Center y el hotel que van a estar aquí en Conroe. Él está en esos proyectos trabajando. Dice que él ve constantemente cómo se está desarrollando la ciudad, cuánto beneficio económico se está siendo impulsado o inyectado en nuestra ciudad. Y al mismo tiempo, cómo lo que es el movimiento de las casas, el housing, o la, el desarrollo de casas, de housing improvement que hay en toda la ciudad. Eso lo está viendo constantemente y eso es lo que está trabajando. Sir, do you guys have a specific budget allocated for every single one of those projects? How do you guys go to, does the, you know, big corporations come to you guys and say, I want to invest? And you guys go from there, getting a budget and approving it? How do you guys do that?
Well, they do, but it's kind of a different level. So we have the Technology Park and the North Park located, you know, north of Conroe. So we do have big corporations come in. We've got a very, very big one coming in right now that will bring approximately 1,500 jobs.
Wow.
And that money is used for us to be able to do economic growth and economic development, which would be our Conroe CEDC. So that money separately, when we go and do, we invest in like the hotel and the Oscar Johnson. We will start the project with our funds and do our R and D. Then we'll go out and sell bonds and certificates of obligations to get the funding. So it doesn't take away from the city money.
So you sell bonds. Explain me that later on, so I can explain that later on to the community. Él le pregunté que cómo era el proceso. ¿Cuál es el proceso que hacen ellos para poder que un buen, un empresario grandísimo? Vamos a decir, por ejemplo, Home Depot, venga acá y diga, ellos quieren invertir. Entonces ellos se sientan ellos y ven el budget y aprueban cómo lo hacen. Me está explicando que está aloocado en diferentes proyectos. Por lo menos ahorita mismo está el parque industrial aquí, aquí en Conroe. Ese parque industrial ya tiene eso. Automáticamente vienen, se acaba de aprobar otro empleador grandísimo que va a venir, que va a invertir sobre eso y automáticamente va a crear 1,500 plazas de empleo adicionales en el área de Conroe. Eso es lo que ellos buscan. Ellos buscan lugares donde la gente pueda conseguir trabajo. Al mismo tiempo, entonces dice que en lo que se llama el hotel, el Centro Conversiones que va a venir y el Oscar Johnson, que es el centro de comunitario que se está renovando. En esos lugares, ellos tienen otros diferentes tipos de planillas o de budgets, donde ellos tienen que saber cómo alocar eso. Esa plata sale de la ciudad y se vende en bonos. Le pregunté que, por favor, que me explicara cómo eso, que se venden los bonos y él me lo va a explicar en estos momentos. Go ahead, sir, can you explain to me what is like bonus and what is that? Because the community, we don't know, we don't know anything.
So, we're rated, what they call it, A triple plus rating with our credit score. So we have credit scores as well as you do as individuals. So when you're that high with your credit, then you can, you can get interest rates that people will, certificate of obligations, that they know we're going to, the city is going to pay them back. So we can borrow money at a very minimum to where you might have to as an individual.
Okay, and is that those, is that part of our taxes that we pay?
No.
No, it's things that are going into the city that is from the reserve of the city, am I right?
That's correct. So when you, the Hyatt and Oscar Johnson are completely different.
Completely different, yeah.
So the money is totally different. So the Hyatt Regency Hotel and the Convention Center, that will bring revenue into the city.
Yes, of course.
Would be the hot tax, which is the hotel occupancy tax that we get with percentage of.
Exactly.
And hopefully, people who stay in the hotel and go into the Convention Center, that they'll come to our downtown and spend money in our restaurants.
Exactly, exactly.
And so that's where it benefits, beneficial. So the Oscar Johnson is a multi-generational recreational facility. So that will be part of the city that owns it, that we will pay the bonds back for that city. So there is a parking recs, just like there is for the new Owen Park and then the new redone rec center downtown. So it will be its own entity and Hyatt Regency is going to be more of a profit center.
Profit center, okay, perfect. Let me explain that to them, so they'll know. Él me dividió completamente cómo se está trabajando todo esto. Los bonos son básicamente lo que agarran y en la ciudad tiene, todas las ciudades tienen una estatística de crédito, como la tenemos nosotros. Para la ciudad de Houston, en estos momentos, está en una A, triple A, la más grande. O sea, que tiene muy buen crédito, ellos pagan, okay? A tomar, es como cuando usted tiene un crédito de 800 y usted va y pide préstamos. Así mi mito lo tiene la ciudad. Se la ciudad agarra y hace el préstamo sobre los fondos de la ciudad y agarra y esos bonos lo invierte. Y que las personas que vayan a invertir agarran esos bonos y nosotros recibimos, o sea, la ciudad recibe el pago sobre eso automáticamente, haciendo los dividendos y creándose lugares, por lo menos el Hyatt Regency. Vamos a decir este momento, el Hyatt Regency va a ser el hotel. Cuando la gente viene y crea un hotel tan grande, la gente entra y se queda, ¿verdad? Eso es cuando usted se queda por noche, le pagan los impuestos. Parte de los impuestos que usted paga sobre los taxes del hotel van a la ciudad de Conroe. O sea, se retribuye esa plata nuevamente a la ciudad de Conroe. Lo mismo va a pasar con cualquier inversionista o cualquier compañía que invierta en el área de Conroe. Las personas que vienen y se quedan en el hotel van a los restaurantes, comen en los restaurantes. Es en los restaurantes pagan taxes sobre los impuestos. Automáticamente eso se retribuye nuevamente al fondo de la ciudad. Es como garantizar que se mantengan los empleos, garantizar que crezca la economía a nivel de la ciudad. Y al mismo tiempo, cada uno de esos, de esas planillas son separadas. Cada una tiene su identidad propia. Por lo menos también está el parque que se está haciendo al lado del Oscar Johnson. O sea, un parque que se esté creando para que nuestros jóvenes, nuestros adultos, nuestras familias puedan disfrutar también y ayudar y ir a los parques. Lo mismo también el Oscar Johnson, que es un centro comunitario donde hay piscinas, donde hay toda clase de cosas, de actividades, donde queremos tener actividades para que los jóvenes salgan de las drogas, tengan todo lo demás. Todo eso viene del fondo de la ciudad de Conroe. Y el señor Kurt Maddox junto con el resto de los consejeros de la ciudad, más el alcalde, más los jueces, se encargan de administrar correctamente esos fondos para que sean apropiados, para que hagan más revenue, para que nosotros podamos tener más trabajos. Sir, on the Oscar Johnson part of it and in all these entities, there's going to be, of course, as well employment, am I right, that are going to be generated?
Absolutely.
That's what we're looking for.
You know, it will, it will generate jobs at both places, even at the Oscar Johnson Center, because it's going to be one of the first of its kind. So, and the Hyatt Regency will provide jobs. And so I want to say 250 jobs that the Hyatt Regency will provide for people to come and have a job and a good job.
Exactly, exactly. Jobs that are, you know, that are needed eventually. So we don't want our kids to not go to another place to look for a job when they can work in the city and still give back to the community. That's what we're trying to keep our students, eventually when they graduate from high school, when they graduate from college. So they can come back to Conroe and live in Conroe and live in a woodland setting, because basically we'll be coming the next Woodlands, you know what I mean? Woodlands has grown a lot and then now they're seeing that Conroe is trying to image what woodland has.
Well, the beauty of it is that, you know, the Marriott Hotel and the Woodlands is now over 25 years old. So now we're going to have something new.
Newer, exactly.
And people, you know, we're being approached and we want to try to pre-sell and people are contacting us to do the conventions at the new hotel, which is very exciting, because we're shooting for May 2023 opening.
Wow.
So we're doing, we're trying to, we will start bookings once we know we get a better hard date that we can plan for. But people are wanting something new and improved. And the occupancy out at the Margaritaville, which is.
Yes, exactly.
The city annex is, the occupancy and the business they're doing out there is even, is phenomenal right now.
Yes, it's phenomenal. I've seen it.
I think I think they said their occupancy was seventy-six percent, so, which is great. And it's summertime, they'll go, they'll push up. So, you know, we budgeted everything on the on the city at right at a sixty-three percent to where it would be, you know, a break even or be able to pay the bills. But so we we're excited about the future.
Ah, es interesante lo que está explicando el señor, porque nos está diciendo claramente cómo estamos creciendo tanto. El hotel de Margaritaville, que es uno de los hoteles que están en el área de Conroe cerca de la misma este, el, lo que es la, el Conroe Lake, el lago de Conroe, está a capacidad de setenta y seis por ciento ya. Eh pues estamos creciendo enormemente. Eh, el Hyatt Regency va a ser construido y va a ser abierto e inaugurado aproximadamente en mayo del año que viene. Este, al eh, al nosotros estamos haciendo, Conroe se está creciendo tanto que se está imaginando uno a ver lo que se llama el área de Woodlands. Muchos de nosotros estamos familiarizados con el área del norte de Woodlands, que es un área exclusiva preciosísima y Woodlands ha crecido enormemente. Entonces él me está diciendo que lo bueno de de tener el Hyatt Regency aquí es que el marriote de War Way de de, cómo se llama, del área de Woodlands tiene muchos años. En cambio, este sería una nueva innovación. Es que ya antes de ni siquiera inaugurarlo, ya están comenzando a pedir bookings. El el centro de conversiones que va a estar ahí, porque la gente quiere traer sus conversiones a lugares nuevos y novedosos con tecnología nueva, con lugares, cuartos limpios, etc., etc. Eso eso está trayendo más ingreso a la ciudad y él dice que la innovación es tan grande. El ver cómo se está trabajando eso es grandísimo y es eso es lo que está tratando. Él le dio, vamos a tener más empleos. Sí, va a haber mucho más empleos. Se especifica que alrededor de trescientas personas, trescientas plazas de empleo va a haber solamente en el hotel, sin sin contar el centro de conversiones, sin contar el 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 centro de eh de educacional de eh Oscar Johnson. Y siguen habiendo. O sea, que para qué? Para que el joven cuando se gradúe de las de las high schools o cuando se gradúe de la de la universidad tenga cómo venir de nuevamente a donde él vive y poder conseguir trabajo en su área respectiva o al menos conseguir trabajo para mantener su familia, tener su vida y vivir en el área donde le conviene. Sir, that's something that I that I always dream. I say, I wanted my kids to stay in the same area, Woodlands and Conroe, because that's where they grew up, you know, especially my oldest one that, you know, they, all of them went to College Park. All of them graduated from College Park and I was talking to Dr. Nula about that. The the amazing district, a school district that we have, and I have an appointment with Dr. Riley coming up soon. And she's gonna talk to us about the amount of percentage, which is the highest percentage now, of seventy-five percent probably of Hispanic students on the colleges, you know, which is, you know, Lone Star College. And that's something that I want those kids to look at and there, most of them are going to business marketing, business administration, business, and that's something that we need in this in the city. So it is amazing the type of work that you guys are investing.
We are, because we want to be able to provide jobs that you can live the American dream and buy your starter home and have your house and have your jobs and what a great place to have that you could work and live in the same hometown. I will tell you that, you know, when I was younger, one of my dreams was to be in city government. And that when I, what I wanted to do, I wanted to come back to Conroe. I wanted to be here with my family. And so I want my kids to come here and work. Now, I know that that's the, that's being hopeful, but we are creating nice jobs and providing livings and living, good living. And these corporations that are coming in and investing in Conroe, you gotta remember, we're investing in them and they're investing in Conroe because we're gonna provide, you know, the economic growth for them to allow these people to come into Conroe and work. So we're excited.
Le estoy diciendo que es muy interesante, que me fascina, porque básicamente siempre le decía y se lo dije al doctor Nola y se lo digo a todos que mis hijos se graduaron aquí en el área y que siempre he querido que mis hijos se mantengan en el área. Son graduados de College Park, de una de las escuelas, están yendo a la universidad de locales y eh que se mantengan en esta área porque esta área está creciendo. Y que todo eso, muchachos que están en college, eh que están en Lone Star, setenta y cinco por ciento de ellos son hispanos, eh están yendo a, se están graduando de las escuelas de Conroe, ahí es como uno de los mejores distritos escolares, este, que tengan más acceso a después de graduación continuar el trabajo. Y él me dice que eso es lo que él siempre ha querido. Él desde joven creía que él iba a trabajar con el gobierno y lo logró. Y está trabajando con el gobierno. Él quiere que sus hijos se graduen de aquí y se mantengan en esta área y que vengan y puedan tener lo que se llama el sueño americano, el sueño de tener tu propia casa, de poder tener tu trabajo, de estar en un área segura donde puedas invertir y donde puedas sentirse seguro. Now, I'm gonna go a little bit further down in the areas. I know everything on the First Street, and if I was looking at the map, everything on that First Street from the back, eh, you know, there is not, it's all the, you know, that are, and that's the question that I had for Mr. For Mr. Jody and that day I called you about it. We're, you know, there's gonna be so much renovations in this area. And then on this area, we have all these property landowners that are renting the properties to other places or they have model homes and stuff like that. There's a lot of, how to call, homeless and things like that. Are, is the city gonna, I'm not saying handout, because we're not here to do no handouts. And is the city gonna go ahead penalize those landowners that are needing to do the restrictions? You know what I mean? Clean up the area, keep up the sewers out, making sure that, you know, there's, everybody's on the same so it will look as well as accommodating with the other ones. We don't want us, you know, cross the railroad track, something is falling in pieces and the other one, everything is new on the other side. We want to make sure that is, the everything looks great. So I thought that was the question that I had, sir.
So it's a great question because we just went on a a trip to another city in Kansas to kind of compare. And the mayor with Councilman Yancey, they talked about doing a, you know, a cleanup even across the tracks or on First Street and getting everything cleaned up. Because if you remember, if you're just going down one oh five until you get to thirteen fourteen or Porter Road or whatever they call, you know, you got the Home Depot facility. So we want to make all, both sides look as much as we can because we have growth going out on the east side, especially past Stewart's Forest, Barton Woods. But we are trying to clean up across the tracks and have a cleanup program to to make it, you know, where everybody is proud of where they live.
Yeah, I I'm gonna go back to in a minute into the homeless part of it because I have a lot of customers, a lot of, a lot of clients of you guys, a lot of restaurants and business owners that are complaining about the issue that we have in the city with the homeless. Um, let me ask you that in a minute. Um, le estoy preguntando y fue una pregunta que yo hice referente a que todo el área primera, todo lo que se, el área que se está renovando con restaurantes nuevos, con localidades nuevos, con clubs, nightclubs, con todo. Está bien bonito, están comenzando a ejercer una, un downtown precioso. Van a ver edificios de parqueo, todo verde y todo lo demás. Pero si cruza el área de los railroad tracks en la primera calle, toda esa área comenzando desde el, la tres treinta y seis hacia abajo, toda esa área está, son eh dueños de propiedades. Muchos están rentando, muchos viven allí. Hay que, hay que limpiar porque hay que, se ve completamente lugares que necesitan cortar hierba, mantenerse. Hay mucho, muchos de de gente que está viviendo en las calles homeless y que hay que mantener todo eso limpio y mantenerlo acorde porque cuando vienen los la nuestros turistas van a ver, oye, bueno, esto está todo limpio aquí y todo esto está feo y van a tener miedo porque dice, no conocemos si nos van a atacar, nos van a robar o cosas. Así que vamos a hablar con él acerca de la seguridad. Y él me dice que sí, que eso fue lo que se fue y eso era una buena pregunta, que porque ellos están tratando de ver cómo eh penalizar a los a los dueños de 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 la, de los locales que están eh o de los eh propiedades que están siendo, que no están siendo cuidadas apropiadamente con las restricciones de la ciudad y eso lo van a comenzar a implementar. Entonces ahora le voy a preguntar acerca sobre los, lo que son los, las personas indigentes de nuestra ciudad. Sir, are are, we call them indigentes, which are, which are homeless. Um, there's a, there's a lot of complaints and I have, I can mention to you like twenty different restaurants, all of them, even Mr. Joe complaining about the homeless in the areas that are not, they're, they're destroying. They're not, they're not, they're, they're, they're there in the nighttime and they're, is is that something that the city is gonna invest to take those people out, tell them to get out on, or you know, the the police officers, you know, Constable Jones, Constable Cash, you know, I'm sorry, Constable, um, the first, and I forgot his name. Exactly. And so they can rearrange those areas? Is there something that we're gonna be able to tell these people that they need to be on the, on an area where they are supposed to be instead of going around or things like that? Or how can we control this? And I'm sorry putting you in a bind. That's something that Jody, and I know that I needed to talk to Jody, but you know more than I do.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you the best answer I can. So, you know, Raymond, um, former mayor pro tem Raymond McDonald really championed that program and he did a fantastic job. And I know with the Dream Center opening, open on Foster Drive, giving a little place to help with the homeless. But yes, we're, they've actually asked me to try to help and fill the shoes of Raymond McDonald. So I'm trying to come in and keep the momentum going to where we can, you know, either help get them out, get them somewhere where they're not, I hate to use the word maybe nuisance, but a danger to anybody.
Exactly, exactly. And they're complaining that they're, you know, I have restaurants like La Chata, restaurant like, like, how to call, Trio, that they're, they're saying, you know, something they come over here at nighttime, they destroy the trash cans, they throw the, you know, they, they start searching. And I'm like, most of them are, yeah, in the, in this, you know, homeless that are good, but the homeless that are addicts, that are needing to go to rehab centers and things like that. So I I imagine that Tri County, you know, can do some help in that area as well.
We are. We're just, we just want to keep the momentum that that Jody and and Raymond really kind of started and have championed. And it's still there. It's not going away. We we've, we discussed it this week on our trip. So we're just trying to make sure we get the right person. We can kind of all, we've got two new council members that's come in. So we're hoping to to get them involved in it as well with Harry Hardman and Howard Wood. So, you know, there's gonna be committees and things to do and so we've kind of spread ourselves thin, but we're gonna, we're gonna really champion this and keep the momentum going.
Este, le estoy, estamos comentando sobre los indigentes. Muchos de nosotros, que muchos de los que ustedes, ustedes sobre todo que tienen este negocios aquí en el área, restaurantes y todo, han visto cómo está la situación con los indigentes que están en las calles. Muchos son adictos, muchos no son adictos. Eh ellos vienen de noche usualmente a destruir las pancartas, destruir las cosas, las propiedades. Y este eh el señor eh eh Maddox fue con el, con el mayor, el alcalde, a un viaje y ellos estuvieron hablando sobre eso. Porque estamos, hay muchas ciudades, por ejemplo, voy a poner el ejemplo, and I'm gonna put the example that we have in in Houston, that thanks to Lord, you guys are doing better weight than times better than that. Uh, when I'm talking about in the area of, uh, they call it, how to call, that area.
There you go.
No, in Houston, down by the
Oh, it's under, it's, it's, it has a lot to do with, it's underneath, it's called, God, we just, we just talked about it this weekend.
Yeah, and that's something that
They live under, they live under, they're living underneath, that were the, something shack, I can't remember.
Exactly, well.
But that has a lot to do with some of the ordinances that are in place that, that
That are not in here, exactly.
Yeah, in in um, community development, Nancy McKeska has done a very good job of making sure that our ordinances are correct, that help with the the camping, it's kind of what it's, the freedom of whatever, being able to camp. So we've gotten that tightened up and that's, that's gonna help and it's helped tremendously because Houston is
It's not doing their ordinance correctly, yes. I can see it. Eso es lo que está diciendo. Básicamente eh me refería al área donde usted ven, muchas veces han viajado al área de Houston, han visto donde los, están viviendo bajo los los muelles, bajo las las calles, bajo los mismos este, el cuarenta y cinco. Abajo usted el montón. Entonces eh porque el city of Houston no ha puesto en orden sus reglas de ordenación donde se le exige que esos, que ellos no puedan vivir allí y llevarlos a los diferentes shelters. Ellos no lo están haciendo. Eso es aquí en el área de nosotros, eso es, eso es que lo que ellos han mantenido. El señor McDonald, el anterior, eh él era pro tem y también era consul, eh ya no está con nosotros, pero dejó el programa de los hombres, los dejó muy 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 bien formado aquí en el área de Conroe. De manera de que están invirtiendo para que estos jóvenes o estos señores que están en la calle se salgan de ahí y vayan a los shelters y traten de estar en los shelters. El Tri County, que es donde si tienen problemas médicos, ellos tienen acceso a programas, a programas médicos, tienen acceso a volver a hacer su vida, tienen acceso a volver a conseguir casas, pero hay que rehabilitar esas gentes. Pero mientras tanto que se están rehabilitando, hay que sacarlas de las calles y eso es lo que ellos dicen que ellos han visto y que no va a pasar eso en Conroe. En Conroe van a tratar de eliminar todo eso de manera de que no veamos esa sociedad, esa esa, esa desdicia de calles y que nos podamos, nosotros podamos vivir en ambientes seguros. Now, talking about um, as security, okay, I know there's issues. Somebody was mentioning that you guys are trying to put cameras. Is that, are you guys gonna put cameras around the area? Uh, after, you know, after they built house and everything, putting cameras to overseas? So the police department is aware for the security of the personnel that is working late nights or security of the of the same people that are around? Is that something that I heard about that? And I'm sorry.
We have, we have what, we have the flock system that we put in place a couple of years ago where we have cameras at designated place. And it's amazing that, how they can pick it up and they know they're the right spot. Now, we're gonna add more cameras.
Okay.
And if you remember, I think it was two or three weeks ago, uh, when the cameras go by and there's a license plate, it reads it if it knows it's stolen. And so that's how we caught the person over in the old Kroger parking lot across from HEB.
Exactly.
So I don't remember the exact number, but I want to say we've more than fifty stolen cars and and theft. And most of the time, all the stuff that's done with the theft of a car, that they're, they've done something wrong and they get apprehended.
Yeah, and that's something that I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring off as a cash and I'm gonna try to bring, because I just got a call from Judge Kehoe. Uh, he wants to talk to the Hispanic community about the the rules and everything, you know, the big sign that he put outside, telling everybody that we are gonna prosecute anybody that is doing wrong to our community. That's something that that we, you know, the Hispanic community has and that's something that we are happy that is happening in Montgomery. Because we cannot tolerate people coming in and killing or doing things. Crime is not allowed in Conroe.
If there's, the old saying is, if there's no rules, there's chaos.
There's chaos, exactly, sir.
So that's what we want to clean it up. Judge Kehoe is fantastic. He's been a blessing to the city. I'm a fan and he's done, he's done an outstanding job.
Yeah, he he told me, Jenny, I need to go to talk to the Hispanic community. I said, sir, my door is open anytime. He came once and he's gonna come back again because we have, we have to talk about security and the Hispanic community needs to know this. Ah, eh estamos hablando sobre la seguridad que usted va a tener después de esto. Ahorita mismo se van a instalar más cámaras. Hay cámaras alrededor, o sea, un un sistema que ha estado implementado hoy en la ciudad donde todo, todo carro, todos los carros, o cada vez que usted pasa por una calle, se graba el número de la placa automáticamente. Automáticamente se han recuperado alrededor de más de doscientos carros que han sido robados en el área. Eh básicamente por ese tipo de sistema. Se van a poner mucho más cámaras en todo el área para la protección no solamente de usted sino de los locales, de los restaurantes, de los empleados que trabajan a horas tardes. Porque hay crimen en la noche también. Así que todo eso se nos va a implementar porque él dice claramente cuando hay caos y no hay reglas y regulaciones, esto es lo que pasa. Pero en Conroe no va a pasar ni Montgomery. Va a haber regulaciones, va a haber, va a haber mandatos. Con nosotros vamos a tener nuevamente al señor, al al juez administrador, el señor este Kehoe, que que ya me llamó porque quiere venir a hablar con la comunidad hispana acerca de la seguridad del área de Montgomery. Y quiero que sepan que eh no se va a permitir a nadie con criminalidad. Los que vengan aquí a nuestra ciudad van a ser llevados al al crimen máximo y van a ser penalizados. Sea quien sea, de donde usted sea. Si usted viene a hacer daño aquí en Conroe, tégalo por seguro que va a ser penalizado. Sir, it was a pleasure talking to you and I know that your time is valuable. Is there anything that you would like to say to the Hispanic community in your behalf, in behalf of the councilmen and in behalf of the love that you guys have for us?
I would like to leave, let y'all know that everybody's in good hands. The city cares every, our council believes in all equals. So we're gonna take care of everybody and try to protect everybody. I can't do it all myself. It's a teamwork and I want to know that our team is working hard for you.
Eh, le estoy diciendo, le doy las gracias por el tiempo que nos ha dedicado. Él está súper ocupado y sé que tengo que cortar la la entrevista, pero me dice que él quiere darle las gracias a ustedes, que quiero, quiere que ustedes confíen en la ciudad y en el consejo, los concejales de la ciudad de Conroe. Ellos están trabajando por el beneficio de todos los ciudadanos. Ellos están aquí para dar el amor, la entrega y la calidad de servicio que usted como eh pagante de impuestos y todos nosotros te tenemos para que esto se vea precioso, para que podamos gozar de la ciudad, para que podamos divertirnos, tener áreas seguras, tener áreas eh donde podamos divertir, pasar tiempo y ser, continuar siendo la, una de las mejores ciudades del área de Texas y de los Estados Unidos. Gracias por estar con nosotros, sir. Thank you so much for being with us today. Les doy las gracias a todos. Thank you so much for listening to us. Please like us in Facebook and all the platforms. We're here for you. Voces en acción, bringing you the latest and thank you so much for being with us. Gracias. Gracias por estar con nosotros. Hasta la próxima, nos veremos. Chao.